All right, on that note, it's ten o'clock, call this meeting in order.
And we finally just thank you for today, Lord, this is just a beautiful day. Lord, we just ask you to be with us as we present the county's business, Lord, we ask you to lead God and direct our decisions, in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and for eternity and for all. Honor the Texas flag, and honor the allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Good Lord, everybody, thank you for being here. At this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court, no formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting, your speaker will be limited to three minutes. See any papers, so we can move on to a presentation and discussion of Department head committee and board of courts. Any discussion on any of those, did y'all see the emergency management one that he's started giving us?
We're taking care of it, isn't he?
Yes.
And he's not even here to repol it?
Exactly. I do want to talk about AgriLife for just a moment, so that this would be a good opportunity for y'all to tell us about what you've got coming up that you were discussing with me about being part of.
Uh, Kids Cows More?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, I'll be getting that letter out later today, I didn't know if we were gonna bring it up today, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
But on May eighth, we'll be having Kids Cows and More, as of now, we have two hundred and three fourth graders from, from Scurry County, and we've invited some other counties to come participate where we're gonna educate them on a couple of different topics of agriculture. We would love to have y'all come and either be group leaders and help wrangle the kids around with the teachers, or help on some of the presentation side of it.
Oh, I like it.
We'd love, it'll be eight to, uh, the presentations will be nine to twelve that day at the Armory.
Okay.
I'll have a letter for y'all later today with more information.
Yeah, I know we did that once, my first and maybe the second year I was here, and then.
I believe nineteen was the last time, or, yeah, assumption is COVID kinda took that one out, and.
Right.
It now, we're, we're gonna get it back up and going, and two hundred and three kids, I think it'll be a really good turnout.
I know where milk comes from.
All right, thank you, Derek. Anything else you want to discuss on the board of courts, or Department head presentations, anybody in the, any one of the department heads want to speak to theirs?
They didn't even want to write them, they don't speak about.
I know, I know.
Evidence of, it's good.
Yeah, I did notice that. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to old business, approval of previous court minutes. I didn't see anything. Let her hear the motion to approve.
Previous court minutes.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, any recent project scheduling step in?
We are, well, I got an email from the folks that sent us the money to repair the road, wonderful, they're gonna finish off the little strip that we're doing, because they're having difficulty driving on it.
I see.
So, I told them a couple of weeks, I mean, if you give us money, we're gonna work on the road, so you just have to be patient.
Yeah, I understand.
We're getting there, we're toughing it now.
Okay. Okay.
Put in driveway, and we've got the equipment at the parking trail.
Okay. That, uh, perfect segue into that, that is completed, the perimeter trail is completed, that, the trails are open for now. A couple of weeks, we're gonna do oil there, and at the cart paths out at the golf course. Parking lot is horrible. Matt swept it, and if you go by there and look at it, it is just a movable mess. So, we need to figure out what we need to do there, do we need to mill it and then go over it with more material, or do we need to just go over it, seal it and go over it with more material?
Jail for my, talking about chip sealings, roads, getting a good little can, so, that would be a good time for doing that.
Interesting, it'd be fixed though.
Yes, it, it does, this swelling, it needs to come in a little straighter. When are y'all looking at doing that?
Uh, we've been talking about it.
Probably next month, we'll start working, I figured an idea on some roads.
Okay, what do we need to do to prep that?
I think, my opinion, we need to mill it. Chip seal it all we get through zip it.
Uh, another issue we have is the pipe over the, uh, at the entrance, those need to be cut off, is there anyone that'd be willing to let us use a loader for a short time while we cut those off to get those down? I know, I, I know.
I wouldn't think you could, is it, how high are they?
Are they really high?
Yeah. Too high for skid steer?
Yes.
What about the, I thought the Parks Department has.
Grill lift as well. It's grill pipe, I don't know if they have a lift too.
Okay.
I'll, I'll check on it.
Yep, they have a lift, you can easily.
Be just closer, okay.
A lot closer.
All right, we'll get with them then on that.
That's all I had there.
Before we get through the, can you figure how much oil we're gonna need out there?
Yeah.
And also the golf course.
All right, any others?
Y'all, I don't know if you, Matt was talking about things, post that I picked up for you for the size of the winter.
Yeah.
If you're gonna drive them or cement them, whatever you do, don't forget to call Dick Test.
Right, yeah, yeah, he called Dick Test for the fence around the front, and we'll probably wait till next month to do those. Thank you. We sure will, so we don't want to hit a gas line or pipeline.
I know.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on, if y'all are ready, move on to new business, we're gonna meet District Two, District Extension Administrator, Rebel Royal.
I'm about to introduce our new District Two, um, District Extension Administrator for Texas A&amp;M, Agricultural Extension Service, Rebel Royal. He came to us from District Six, and our West District, and started as the District Extension Administrator there for many years, and prior to that, he was a county extension agent in various counties. Um, he's Ira native and grew up here in our community, and we're really glad to have him in District Two, and glad to have him in our District Two in a leadership position, and he's part of our family and extension, and I will turn it over to him.
Thank you all. Well, I have nothing to say, man. It's a little surreal for me to be in this courthouse this morning, the sheriff's sitting right there, and I'm not in trouble, so, that's a little different. So, it's really neat to be here this morning, uh, and be in front of you guys, I did grow up out of Ira, my mom and stepdad still live there, I guess they've been there forever. Jimmy and Susanna Wilson, they're in Ira, are my mom and stepdad, and so, I grew up there, went to school K through twelve at Ira, and, uh, if you know the Dunn family out around Lake Thomas, that, that's my, my mom's family, and so, I've been in this part of the world all, or, most of my life, and pretty close for the last, oh, thirty years, but I, I was a county agent, um, in five different counties. I started out in East Texas in Henderson County, but I was only there like fifteen months, and I went to Briscoe County in the Panhandle, spent two years there, two years in Castro County at Dimmitt, and then I was at Ashramon over here in Stonewall County for seven years, um, and moved from there to Glasscock County, Garden City, and I was the agent there for ten, and we still live there in Garden City. My wife is the director of the daycare that the school owns there in Garden City, and, um, I was a county agent, like I said, ten years there, so twenty-two total, and then about the last ten, I've been in District Six, far west Texas, as a District Extension Administrator. Um, and this was kind of the job that was always on my mind, that I always wanted, and so Michael retired, and Michael and I have been really good friends, and just got the opportunity to move in this role. At the moment, I'm doing both districts, so I've got forty-two counties from basically Toya, El Paso, and down to El Rio, so it's been a little crazy since March one, but, uh, really excited to be able to work in this district, a lot more goes on, on, on the South Plains and, and down in here. Um, really good county agents, and so, excited, and that's, I just want to introduce myself this morning and let y'all know, one of my main jobs is to be a liaison with the judges and commissioners in our, in our counties, and so I'm available at, at any time y'all might need me, hopefully it's for good things, but we have to deal with bad ones at times too. So I'm gonna leave some cards with you guys, and, um, y'all please feel free to pick up the phone, um, I, uh, I always realize a reason to get to come eat mom's lunch, so anytime I can come over, I think she'll do that, and eat lunch with mom, and I stopped in this morning, and I said, now dad, you hadn't done anything to make anybody mad up there lately. So, he swore he hadn't, if he did, it's not my fault, but anyway, I, I appreciate y'all, thank you so much for supporting the extension, our county agents here in this county, as you always have. Uh, it's, it's very beneficial to have great commissioners and judges that, that take care of us and support our programs, and, and I know these two have a good program going on here, we spent a little, the last hour or so talking about their program, probably a little bit longer before I leave, and so that I'm just gonna get a feel for what they've got going on in the county, so, don't believe anything this guy tells you about me. Cause he was there too, so. I appreciate y'all greatly, and that's all I have.
I just have one quick question, sir, since you're from here, we'll start being, seeing preferential treatment, correct?
Oh, sure.
You, you were doing good, Jimmy will.
I know, you can lift that out, it would be a decent weather. Uh, we all got past. Thank you.
And if we're comparing, we have the best program in Texas. Wonderful. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to telecommunications week. I don't know if you noticed, but I changed the colors on the courthouse, it is, uh, goldish, just trying, tried to make it gold, it's as close as I can get it to go. Thank y'all for coming, we appreciate you, all the. Yep. Okay, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, and emergency medical services, do you want to read this?
You're doing great.
Whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of, of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Scurry County Sheriff's Office Emergency Communications Center, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with, providing them information and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Scurry County Sheriff's Office have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, therefore be it resolved that the Scurry County Commissioners Court declares the week of April thirteenth through nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Scurry County, in honor of men and women whose diligence and. Keep our city and citizens safe. And absolutely, hundred percent, been there, done that, they, they care more than you realize, uh, and, um, without good dispatchers and telecommunicators. Emergency responders cannot do their job, unsung heroes, absolutely. All right, all in favor? Okay, any government agreement with Crosby County, um, hey, do you want to talk to this one?
Uh, we just need to, they just reached out, one of the house inmates with us, like several others that we have, so, pretty standard contract, same as all the rest of them.
Judge, I make a motion that we approve the agreement with Crosby County.
Okay, accepting donations to county entities, we had donations to the library, senior center, and trails materials. Library, she was gonna be here this morning, but she had to change up her programming, something was out, or something, a total of seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. The senior center had two hundred and seventy dollars and two thousand ninety-eight dollars and forty-four cents, and then we had a donation of fifteen hundred and fifty dollars for materials at the trails, and that was, uh, the check that, uh, was purchased.
Those are my motion to accept the donation to county entities as presented.
Second, all in favor? Our court to consider sending a burn ban, um, I'm gonna let Jay speak to this, we had a conversation.
We did get some rain this past week, uh, the east end of the county is green, the west end is not green. A few more windy days, a few more high temperatures, we're gonna be back in fire conditions again. Several of the counties around us are leaving their zen, some are taking them out.
Discussed possibly.
If it is.
Send it out and coming back in a couple of weeks?
Yes, if we take it out, uh, we will look very hard at putting it back in the very next Commissioners Court meeting. With Nathan couldn't be here today, but him and I both feel like we're not in a predicament to say, yes, we're good to take it out and leave it out. We have still dry, we've got lots of dry vegetation out there, and one spark, and here we go.
Yeah, we did have a little over, any of those.
Are we anticipating, or does the forecast show windy days in the next?
It shows windy and rains hot again.
I know, I know, springtime.
I guess springtime, uh, you know, one thunderstorm like in two thousand and eleven, one lightning strike, strikes a tree, and it sits there for three, four days and smolders, and the wind blows, we'll have another two thousand and eleven.
We gotta pull out first, but that's.
Yeah, we gotta pull out first.
I'd certainly be for taking it out for, for right now, and then putting it back in, uh, as soon as the next Commissioners Court, I've got several people out to these that are needing to get rid of some brush, that, and have called me several times, and texted me. You're out there where there is no rain, you can't. You're gonna split the county.
Yeah, I bet they're, they've contacted me, and like I said, back to the east, it's green, it's green enough, and it's, you know, I know back to the west, it's a little drier, but, uh, I think right now, I'll make the motion that we're, we're sending it for now.
We can't split the county, can't we? I've heard that we could before, but.
I've not seen anything on splitting the county.
Sir.
I've not seen anything on splitting the county, and I get all the burn reports over each month.
That's just gonna create coyotes.
It could.
Wait for them to lift it, lift it.
Okay, all right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor? All opposed. All right, uh, set public hearing to address, to add County Road twenty-one thirty-seven to the county maps.
So, all this was redone whenever, part of twenty-one thirty-seven was left in, part of it was taken out, and I'd like to put the north end of it back in, so. It started, no, it come off with eighty-four at the, the cemetery, it goes up to twenty-one thirty-six, and then that's when it was left off over to that, and I just wanted to incorporate the rest of it into there.
Set a public hearing on, what date, May twentieth is our, uh, second meeting, that's more than thirty days. May twenty. You said, you said, all in favor? Uh, set public hearing to abandon County Road twenty-two fifteen.
Okay, this road, nobody uses it, it's between twenty-two oh-two and twenty-two twelve, Max Drum owns all that land right there, most of it, so, nobody uses that road, we haven't maintained it here, it's only like a hundred yards long, so I'd like to abandon that.
Same dates?
Yep.
Second, all in favor? Uh, consider request to participate in All American City Award, consider using VCD funds to promote Scurry County at All American City Awards, and allow the county judge to travel to Denver, Colorado to represent Scurry County. I'm gonna let Libby speak to this, she has been heading this up.
Good morning, um, my name is Libby Wiggins, I'm Special Project Director for Cities Snyder, and I'd love to tell you a little bit more about this project. So Snyder was named a finalist for the twenty twenty-five All American City Award, and this recognition reflects our entire community. So this year's theme is strengthening environmental sustainability through inclusive community engagement. So across the nation, cities, counties, and regions are being recognized for their ability to bring people together, create positive change, and build thriving resilient communities. So twenty finalists were chosen based on the criteria of shared vision, civic engagement, inclusiveness, and equity, collaboration, innovation, and impact. So next, a delegation will attend the All America City Award event in Denver, that'll be this June, and will share ideas, learn from experts, build connections, and then ultimately, we present the story of their success and impact to a jury, and from there, ten get to move forward in our selective as winners. We'd love for Scurry County to be part of the delegation, it's a chance to highlight your programs and be seen on a national stage. This type of national recognition can help bring in new business, increase tourism and grant funding, and increase community pride and collaboration. It's an opportunity to celebrate the work we're all doing together, and I'd love to tell you who all was selected. So the ones from across the nation, these are the selections for the finalists, it was Akron, Ohio, Albuquerque, New Mexico, Austin, Texas, and they're the only other Texas, um, going, Cariboro, North Carolina, Chelsea, Massachusetts, Delray Beach, Florida, Denver, Colorado, Fort Collins, Colorado, Hampton, Virginia, Jacksonville, North Carolina, Ginston, North Carolina, Leo Minister, Massachusetts, Memphis, Tennessee, Petaluma, California, Port St. Lucie, Florida, Seattle, Washington, Snyder, Texas, Statesboro, Georgia, Tallahassee, Florida, and Western Riverside Region, California. So we'll be sharing the stage with all those participants and hope to be named a winner.
What are the things that, that you put in the application to get us to that point?
So I think that the biggest thing is us all working together and the collaboration, so, the application question started with our story, and of course, we mentioned the nineteen sixty-eight award and. And of course, we mentioned the nineteen sixty-eight award and how that started with Operation Sparkle. And then from there, we just told the story of our community, all the different programs that are related to environmental sustainability. All the programs where, you know, you show up and it's a board or a committee with ten different groups represented on it. And I think that's really what helped. From the county perspective, um, we were able to use three programs. One of them was Keep Snyder Beautiful, which has everybody represented on that. One of them was the STEAM team collaboration and everything they're doing within the school systems for environmental sustainability. And then the third program was um, emergency management and how the city and county came together to share that resource for the betterment of our residents. So we had that from the county. We also mentioned the nature trail, the pump track. Um, there were just many initiatives where as, as much as we could think of, that would fit their theme. And I think that just highlights how impactful it is whenever you come and you work together. So I really think it'd be great to have the county represented on this delegation and be able to share the programs that you're doing as a county. Cause it gives you a national stage and you'll be collaborating with all these people. I think they said it's gonna be three to six hundred people. Um, and then they're gonna livestream it. So there's gonna be watch parties across the nation, the nation that'll just showcase your work. So it's an incredible opportunity.
Take a picture, let me review over here.
You've done that, haven't you?
Does that make a motion that we participate in the All American City Award and allow VCD, VCD funds be used? And for you to be able to travel out of state to the, to Denver, Colorado to represent Scurry County?
All in favor.
I know the people that are going. I don't know anybody else up there. Now I have, I did spend some time in Denver in nineteen ninety. But I don't think anybody I knew is there anymore. I will not get too high at all. I will not uptake at all. Test me before I go, while I'm here, when I get back.
I'm good with that. But thank you, that, I, I think this is, this is amazing. Did you ever see how many applied for the All American City?
No, they don't, they didn't ever state how many applied. It was just across the nation, open to any community. And when you apply, you apply as an entire community, so that's what we did.
And they whittled it down to sixty and then they brought it down to twenty.
They brought it down to twenty, so twenty are chosen to move forward.
Absolutely. Yeah, and, and we've all worked together, together over the last few years on those entities and moving very forward. Where it, it's amazing to see how well we're working together. Okay, uh, moving on to reappoint Dr. Ryan Morris's local health authority. So I got a packet from uh, the state that said, you need to fill this out for Dr. Cooper. And I didn't realize when we appointed Dr. Morris that this needed to be done. So I called him up and they said, yeah, you need to do this and go ahead and reappoint him in your next meeting. Um, and the effective term will be April fifteenth twenty-five, starting today to April fifteenth of twenty twenty-seven. It's a two-year appointment. Um, he has agreed and he's signed the documents that needed to be signed, so.
Dr. Ryan Morris is a local health attorney for ten years.
Authority. All right, there's a second. Second, all in favor. Um, going back to the rescinding of burn ban, I will get that order done and get it to everybody to sign. Uh, consider discount for Snyder Professional Firefighters Association to use golf course for fundraiser. How are you?
I'm good.
Good.
My name is Dylan Smith, I'm here to represent Snyder Professional Firefighters Association. Uh, this year we have decided to do a golf tournament. Um, it's gonna be benefiting beds for kids. Uh, when we initially started this, we want this to be an annual fundraiser that our association holds, um, using the Scurry County Golf Course. Uh, when we initially started this, um, we've seen throughout the fire department side that we have lots of kids in our communities that do not sleep on beds. And it's, it's pretty sad to see, so we thought, you know, a lot of people do coke drives, things like that. We want to do something different uh, to give back to the community. Um, when we initially started, we thought we were gonna have to buy five to ten beds. Um, the latest number that I heard is fifty-three as of now. Um, we've teamed up with, I believe it's Pierce. I think it's gonna end up being three hundred dollars a bed. What that will include is a bed frame, a bed, and the bedding to go with it. If we have to purchase fifty beds for the community, that is fifteen thousand dollars. So by having a discount, what that is gonna allow us to do is purchase more beds. Even if we get half price of the golf course, that's two and a half beds that we're able to purchase with those extra funds for our fundraiser.
Where do, where do you find these statistics that shows that fifty kids aren't?
The schools, CPS, and some of the, some of the children worker associations that they have, have, have given us that information.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
So like CPS, the schools, um, it's for all of Scurry County, it's not just Snyder School, it's Ira Hermling.
Okay.
Um, the Snyder School, um, just dealing with the schools and the CPS workers, um, is how we've gathered that information.
Wow, that is ugly.
Yes, sir, it's pretty sad. Well, I certainly wanna, we wanna fix that problem.
Yeah, unless we give a discount as needed, but just.
Can we not just rescind the fee uh, for this occasion?
Can I speak?
Sure.
You know, I've spoken to Jay about this and he promised he wouldn't hate me for saying this, but we definitely have four tournaments coming up, all of them are benefit tournaments. Now, I, I didn't know these numbers, these are severe numbers, uh, really severe and sad numbers. Uh, so whatever you guys want to agree to is fine, just keep in mind, you, you might have others come in asking for the same thing. Right now, our rate is fifteen hundred dollars for the entire day and includes all twelve our carts. Is that high, is that low? I don't know, it's higher than what it has been in the years past, but it's also um, primary money, revenue source for the golf course subsequently for the county and for the taxpayer. But this is a unusual, unique burst of circumstance, certainly.
Thank you.
For us to talk about the discount or to allow them to use the course.
I just think this is just a sad and unfortunate situation. And I thank all the help that these guys can do, they're already volunteering their time. Just feel like it's something we can do.
Amen.
I mean, I don't, I don't have any problem with this, but you'll have the others come and request the same thing. So you're, you're setting a precedent.
I don't know that anything is as dire as this is.
Well, that's why I asked him, who are the other benefits? Gayway Family Services is one of them. Um, you said Christian School is another one, and then the Scholarship Foundation. So I, I agree that it is, it is dire. Gayway Family Services serves children, uh, abused women and children. So just know, I'm a caregiver, send me, I think it's a good benefit, so, but you will have them come to request the same thing.
Got to go case by case, please.
For sure. You have a motion in a second, all in favor.
Make a motion, Jeff?
We, we tag team.
So what is, what is the fee?
Rescinding it, it's nothing.
Oh, good, good.
Thank you. Where are we now, of course, to consider bids to sell four Zoll Impact Ventilators and bids to accept bids? I put that on there wrong, put that on there to buy, purchase on the last agenda, I misunderstood, so we are selling. Any discussion on the case?
Sure. Judge Commissioners Court, I'd like to sell four of the five Zoll Impact Ventilators to a medical company that is shown or proven to be able to handle those. I don't, and I would ask that any bids that aren't from a ventilator or biomedical company not be accepted. But we do go out for bids and that's just safety of the ventilators.
Bids from who?
Any ventilator management group or biomedical group.
Okay. Return on the Sunday is the, the twenty eighth, do you?
So you open on, right, twentieth?
Is that worth those fifty dollars?
I'll reach out to you. We're in a second, all in favor. Approval of traders monthly report and personnel report and first quarter report will be all free.
We didn't have any turnover last month, so comp is down. Get into vacation season, so people are start taking more time off. And on the quarterly report for the investment, I broke everything down. Um, just, I think it might be easier to read so you can see the textbook versus Texas class and everything in it, so.
Okay.
Maybe I'll keep scrolling, and I like charts, so those are fun.
Same, all in favor. Approval of county auditors March twenty-five monthly financial report. And that's online. All in favor. Okay, certified revenues.
Here we have three different certified revenues. There's one for, uh, it's from the DCOS for the third of the Placer AI software. Um, going into miscellaneous revenue, but it will be a budget amendment presented here in a few minutes for eighty-four hundred dollars. Then the second one is from the donation, certify the revenue for the donation for the park recreational bike trail of fifteen hundred dollars. There's also a budget amendment going to be presented for that. And the third one is for the uh, bid we received from the ambulance network for the two thousand sixteen Chevy Type Two van. Um, for nine thousand five hundred dollars, certify that revenue going into sale of assets for MS.
All in favor? Lineout transfers in a few minutes.
The first one's a non, non-departmental budget amendment for the eighty-four hundred dollars from the uh, funds we just certified from the city, from the DCOS for the eighty-four hundred dollars from Placer AI going into maintenance repair miscellaneous line. Second one is also funds we just certified for the Texas Parks and Recreational Grant, the expense line for fifteen hundred dollars. And then we have a few lineout transfers. First one is precinct three commissioner court line for three thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. Precinct three auto expense coming out of precinct three for the material and construction for the same amount. Front bumper replacement and tires for precinct three commissioners pickup. Um, then the lineout transfer for extension office agent dues, five hundred dollars out of maintenance repairs. They had, um, I know they didn't give the newest copy of this one, I had, can correct this, cause the explanation at the bottom of this is not correct. So I'll send you up the corrected version. Um, they had a additional dues that they had to pay. And she corrected it and sent it yesterday. I didn't, I think I'll have it, I'll send that one to y'all. Um, then we have Commissioner three road and bridge capital outlay, five thousand plus, it's five thousand three fifty, three fifty-nine out of road material and construction to the balance on the twenty twenty-five skid steer that was transferred. And then the golf course, six hundred dollars other equipment out of equipment a thousand to five hundred, unexpected replacement of square supplies.
That was.
Yeah, that was on.
All in favor. Um, I guess I could say what we're doing.
House bill eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand four fifty-one thirty-seven.
All right, we don't have an executive session, so.
Would you send me back a copy of that?
I'm gonna go over here and just, I'm gonna sign it and make a copy.